Weeks, town meeting Saturday, pay attention. I wrote that two weeks ago. It's today, it's today, 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 today. Today, easier. I've been working on things. It's easier to pay attention when I'm not worrying about Worm. My heart and my head aren't going too fast, they're so just empty. I don't know how everything works now that Worm is here. I don't know, I'm just trying to pay attention. I feel like if I, if I stop doing things right now, then time's gonna fade away from me and I can't let that happen. And I've already wasted enough time with not being able to focus because I was so worried about Worm and kinda passed out on Worm the other day. Has the leather worker stopped throwing a fit? Can I sell these ink sacs? Paper, paper, paper. This is good, this is good, this is keeping my mind occupied before I have to deal with people who have threatened my loved ones and the lives of innocents. And a building and be diplomatic. I need to check something real quick. I need, I, yes. Prank war, no stealing. Relocating resources, it are allowed. Mary has left hers blank. That's not good. I don't know if I wanna come Shay. That's okay, you don't have to. Uh, Rains, Rains says hi, by the way. Um, I'm gonna go chat to Rains about our plans for uh, the meeting that's coming up. Cause we need to figure out, I don't wanna say our plan of attack because we're, you know, we're hoping that it won't result in a conflict. But we need to make sure we're both on the same page, so we're not giving conflicting stories. Do you mind if I talk with you guys as well? Just while I make my, my cake? Um, I kind of wanna have it as just audente for a little bit, if that's okay?
Okay.
And, and then we can talk to you after?
Okay.
I love you.
Love you.
You're wearing a suit?
Yeah.
Should I be wearing a suit?
I mean, I just figured I would be in a suit. Um, cause I didn't want a sword to get in the way of my intentions, I guess.
It's a good idea. Oh, speaking of. Okay, witnessing, my sword going in the ender chest.
In the chest.
Everything else I have on mirror tools and my bow and my axe with sharpness on it, but shh. When I said I was going to meet with you, Worm asked if she could come too, but I wanted to talk to you without her. And I sort of passed out the other day before I got to.
Yeah, you're okay, by the way?
Yeah.
Bit scary, what happened there?
I guess I just didn't realize how much the exhaustion of not being able to sleep when I was worried about Worm was catching up to me. Once I knew she was home safe, I guess it all just came crashing in.
What are you thinking?
I wanna try and be diplomatic, I wanna try and be reasonable. I want to be diplomatic enough that no one can say it's our fault. I don't wanna make an aggressive move if it can be helped. I want to try and use logic, I want to be reasonable. Anyone's gonna decide that this whole conflict is our fault, they're gonna have to make a lot of logical jumps to get there.
Nothing's mattered to me more than this, to be honest. The last time I was around these people, I, I lost my call and I don't, I'm not exactly keen on letting Worm see that side of me.
I'll be here this time, so you won't be facing them all alone. I don't want Worm involved in all of this. I'm scared to let Worm know how scared we are of Moon and, and Maiden and Mary. And I don't know how to go about this if Worm's here. And I can't, we can't lie to Worm, we can't. But I don't know how much I wanna tell Worm either and I just, I don't know what we're doing.
I think it's time for us to face the fact that Worm needs to be an adult in this kind of situation, needs to figure out for themselves whether or not they can handle the truth. If Worm wants to come, it's their decision, it's not ours.
We can't shield Worm from a war if one does happen, all we can do is not be the ones to start it. Cause you know, if we start a war, however well deserved it is, if we throw the first punch, Worm is never going to forgive us.
But you know what? I'm tired Shay, I'm tired. I'm tired of pretending I'm a good person Shay, cause I don't think that I am. Trying to be a good person is holding me back from this realization that if actions don't have consequences, we're gonna have to be the consequence, or someone has to be the consequence.
Yeah, sometimes consequences are natural, sometimes consequences are reactions.
If this is gonna go unanswered, there is no line that I won't cross to make sure that they will pay.
Okay, so on the note of not letting them get away with this, a few things to confirm. When the disks went missing, not saying they were taken, saying they went missing. When the disks went missing, was Mary's house pranked at about the same time?
That's how I understood the situation.
Do we know who did the prank? Was it you?
I was the one who filled the house with cobblestone.
Okay.
But that's not to say that I um, sorry.
Not to say that you stole the disks, cause the two events aren't related, okay? So that's what I wanted to check. So you did that as part of the prank war, which is your prank war, so obviously you follow the rules of your own prank war. I just checked the prank war document, it says no stealing but rearranging is okay. But uh, the important thing is that um, Mary was the only one not marked. There were yeses, there were nos, Mary's wasn't marked.
Yeah.
Also, was there a witness to the prank? Cause you said there had to be a witness in the book.
No, but there wasn't witnesses to the other pranks either.
Okay, that's what I wanted to check.
It wasn't very well thought out at the time.
Yeah, but that's what I wanted to check because I feel like that is the most concrete evidence against you. So if they're going to use logic, which I can't guarantee they will, that's probably what they'll say.
Shay, these people are unreasonable. They see me as the bad guy. Maybe I should just accept that to them, I'll always be the bad guy.
Do you uh, wanna go keep Worm company while she bakes?
Yeah, where is she? Is she at your house?
Yeah, that's the information I needed from Rains. Rains was the one who did the prank. Rains has already told me that he did not steal the disks. Been over this a dozen times and he would have told me, he would have told me if he'd been the one to steal. Hi, what's up?
I didn't think you'd be coming.
I don't know if I will.
That's fair enough. I, I, I know we've been talking since you got back, but talking about what's going on, I'm actually going.
I just don't know if I'm gonna.
You don't, you don't have to.
Okay, I was doing something to keep me busy. Just something from worrying.
Worm, you don't have to worry about anything. Shay and I, we're gonna take care of it, okay?
Uh, speaking of.
It's gonna be fine.
Rains, um.
Yeah.
Should I sort of take the lead, speaking wise? I mean, I'm the leader of our faction, so if it's stuff concerning our faction, should I take the lead? I feel like I can.
Yeah, probably, but as I said, it's not about our faction though, is it?
No, it's not, but.
It's about everything, it's about everyone.
Yeah, you're right, it's about everyone, but if they're painting us as the villains, then they're painting us as PvP, which means that I'm the leader. And also, I know how to bite my tongue. And you lost your temper in the past, so I think it's probably best if I take a bit of a lead?
I don't know, I'm just going unarmed since I'm gonna be the one that's painted as the bad guy.
Yeah, uh, Rains.
Not salty or anything, but.
In, in this chest, there's splash potions of invisibility and put splash potions of harming.
Harming, maybe I should, I shouldn't go that far.
That's fair, but splash.
I've taken an invisibility one.
Yeah, splash invisibility, I have splash harming in my ender chest, but I don't have them on me. I've got a lot of weapons in my ender chest, including stuff that I'm hoping to never use, just in case. If I'm the first one there, it shows eagerness and I really, really want this to happen. What do I do now? I guess I'm gonna take a seat by the rose, I'm not gonna take a seat at the head of the table. And I'm gonna take a seat where I can see who comes in. Hi guys.
Hi Shay.
Hi. It's about time for a town meeting, huh?
Just a smidgen, but you know.
Yeah.
Stick out in your fancy armor.
Yeah, I totally forgot to take that off, I probably shouldn't be armored. It's honestly, it's, it's not the best. I have better armor, but I didn't wear it, cause I uh. We're not gonna fight, you know, and there's not gonna be any creepers or anything around here, so it's all good.
I'd very much like to not fight.
Yeah, honestly, I barely ever take this armor off. I think the closest I've gotten in ages is taking off the chest plate to cart some zombie villagers around so they don't get thornsed.
Anyway, how are you Shay? Been uh, it's been an interesting couple of weeks.
I'm, I'm alright, I've been a little stressed out honestly lately, just.
I feel you, I feel you.
Yeah, I uh, oh, thank you for the carrot. I've been uh, remembering my old world, I guess, and.
Aw, yeah.
I really, so I didn't like it, it wasn't nice there, so I don't particularly want to go back.
Oh, I feel that, I feel that.
Yeah, reliving memories.
Luckily, we don't have to go back, cause there really isn't a way back, is there?
Um, not that we know of.
We're all stuck here.
Yep, and we've gotta make the most of what we have in this world.
Alright, some people are late. It's, it is six.
Oh, yeah, I'm honestly surprised that I managed to make this meeting on time, cause I keep losing track of time. Not like.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Not like I pass out and wake up in different times, although I guess I did pass out earlier this week. I sort of forgot to sleep for several weeks on end.
Oh.
It, it's fine, I just.
You have some, some impressive stamina.
Got distracted. Well, yeah, you kinda had to where I came from. I don't really know how many days it's been since things first times. I just lose track of time, so every couple of days I was reminding myself of the meeting and getting Rains to remind me of how many days away it was, so. I'm actually on time, which is really surprising, cause I expected to be like twenty minutes early or like half an hour late.
Yeah, well, it appears that we're the only ones on time, so that's great.
Yeah.
Off to a great start.
I propose there's more cool flowers.
Um, so what all, what all are we discussing here? Uh, do you have any idea? I'd like to, I'd like to maybe have an idea before we uh, dive into this.
I mean, I've been wanting a town meeting for a while for a number of reasons. We haven't had one since you guys all came to this world and I wanted to see how you guys were settling in. We haven't run a market day and we thought about running a market day, so I kind of wanted to discuss a bit about like, you know, events where all of the factions could do something communally. Sort of checking in with people, maybe discussing some issues that have arisen that might not have been fully talked about.
Come up.
Yeah, but like, I don't want it to just be settling grudges or gripes or getting everyone involved. It, it's also maybe worth talking about how everyone is dealing with the rules and discussing how those are working with everyone, how everyone feels about the borders and badlands and the ways the factions interact with the systems we've set up. Cause you know, we set it up before you over here and now that we've had time to actually test it out, I guess it's important to see. They've been right outside the door for several minutes now.
Yeah, you know what, yeah, keep, keep Rains over there, that's probably for the best. Y'all just casually just four whole minutes late. We're missing one, aren't we?
I.
The mysterious third member of our faction whom we never see. So how's everyone doing? How's it going?
Good, yeah.
Good, yeah. Cool!
Um, I mean, I feel like there's just like overwhelming tension.
How do we really wanna go about this? Cause obviously everyone's got a seat at the table, everyone has a right to be heard and to talk and to be listened to. But like, do we want to have someone sort of chairpersoning to make sure everyone gets a say? Do we wanna just do our best without, do we want something like that?
Yeah, I vote Eve. Eve seems like a pretty neutral third party. Let's be honest, we're gonna talk about the conflict and builders are neutral. And Eve, you know, Eve is pretty neutral.
I'm happy with that. Sunny, are you, are you good for me to take on that role?
Oh, what, oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Mary, do you wanna sit with Moon on that side? And then maybe you have Sunny on the other side of the table, so it's like the two neutral parties in the middle. Worm isn't back, do we know if Worm is okay?
Worm is fine.
Yeah, did you get anything else from last time we talked about her?
Worm's a big girl.
That's incredibly vague.
Yeah.
She's.
I mean, I know, I know she is, that's why I'm not.
It's not my business.
Worried about her, but I was just like, you know.
It's not my business to share, to be honest.
You?
I'm sorry, I can't give more details, but I mean, just know that.
No, it's okay, I'm sure if Worm wanted me to know, Worm would have told me.
Yeah, um.
Anyway, we should probably move on to the um, actual thing that we're here for.
Uh, yes.
I, I am kinda confused, I, Eva's probably as well, cause we don't really know exactly what's going on. I'm not sure like what the town meeting we want is for, like what goals do we wanna reach, that sort of thing.
I can.
What do you think? I think a good start would be everybody on either side of the conflict, just having a minute to explain their side of the story. No interrupting or jumping in or, you know, obviously talking about shit that's gone on might like, you know, I rate getting people a bit angry and frustrating.
I'm trying to raise my hand.
Yes, yes, your, your, your question, I, I'll take that as, as a hand raising in future.
So we were chit chatting a little bit before everybody, we thought that um, it might be a good idea if before we get into all the conflict stuff, we get into some other stuff first. Shay had some things that they wanted to bring up.
Yeah.
I, I don't think it's good to just dive right in, you know, let's start slow and build up, that's, that's my thought.
He's up to it. Yeah, that makes sense. Shay, did you wanna talk about?
Well, it's been quite a while since the four of you showed up and we haven't really had a town meeting since you got here. So I kinda wanted to check in and say, hi, it's good to have you here. How are the factions? How are the rules that we had in place? Because when we made the rules and the borders and stuff, it was sort of an experiment to see if it would work. And now that we have more people and more experience, we can see if there's anything that needs amending or if there's anything we wanna talk about. So I think I just wanted to mostly check in. And also maybe we could actually organize a time to have a town market thing, because that was a group collaboration event that we thought of doing that we haven't yet. So yeah, those were the things I wanted to put on there.
Alright, well, we'll go first. Um, as far as our faction goes, I mean, Mary, you can chime in with anything. I think our faction is quite lovely, I think it's coming along nicely, I think we've developed it nicely. A lot of team effort got into it, I think it's great. And you know, the world in general, it's, it's fantastic, it's fun to explore, um, has a lot to offer, I think. I think the factions are working, as far as I can tell, I think the passes are good. So that we know that, you know, people aren't allowed to, you know, trespass and that people who do trespass are in the wrong. Um, especially when things are, you know, stolen or whatever. Um, but yeah.
Okay.
I think it's effective. Mary, anything to add?
I think it's effective.
Effective.
It's definitely a lot to learn, cause it's so different from where I came from and everything, but I think it's okay and I think it's effective. I'm slowly learning, I'm finding cool stuff, you know, like these plants, I found those outside. Animals, found those outside, they're all good.
Eve, how do you feel?
I'm, I'm quite happy, I like being in a faction with Sunny, I like doing my builder stuff and strip mining and. I mean, obviously, we had the tragedy of boyfriend, so that, that was rough, but that, that wasn't really a result of the rules that we have in place or anything. That was just something that I guess was a bit sad, but I'm, I'm happy with the system, I'm, I'm quite happy with it. I think it's nice that we all have different spaces for different interests and, you know, we can, we can hang out with people who share the same interests and wanna work on the same stuff at us, but also we have mid and we can visit each other with the streamer passes if we wanna hang out with people who don't share those interests.
Alright, cool, that, that is good to hear. It seems like for all of you, it seems to be working fairly well. Uh, what about you, Rains? Do you have anything to add?
I mean, I never really believed in the streaming passes, even when it was explained to me. I understand the need for factions, but the um, passes kinda confused me, still do. That's I guess something that I'm still working through, that's my own issue to deal with. But you know, I mean, it's been fine, I've been exploring this world, world is awesome, I mean, it's barely been touched by anyone, so. Being able to go out, explore, build things.
And Sunny, is there anything you wanna add as people who've been here with the rules a little longer? I mean, it's not just the four of them that came at the time they did that get the say in this.
Uh, I mean, I like it so far, I mean, I, I do enjoy the notice board, which was a new addition, which I love, because it's, you know, we're able to communicate with each other. I love our panda, I also like being in a faction with Eve, I love that very much. I was gone for a little bit, so I don't really, like, I wasn't really here for like a long time, but.
I missed you.
Missed you too. I've enjoyed it and like, I enjoy like exploring outside my faction, cause like, you know, again, Rains said there's, I've gone, I've gone so far away. Like, I've gone like thirteen thousand blocks away and stuff, it's been real fun.
I've really enjoyed exploring this world.
Hmm, it's fun, it's nice, cause you get to find like new places.
Yeah. I don't know if we wanna really like decide on a date for it, but I, I still think that having like a town marketplace day thing could be really cool.
That's a really nice idea. I've got lots of stuff to offer.
I have quite a fair bit that I've been uh, keeping just in case other people want it too, so I'm always happy to.
I have wine.
Seriously, this is open to absolutely anyone, I do not care if we are friends, I don't care if we've talked before. If you want saddles, please take them off my hands, I don't have enough storage for all the saddles I have.
Oh my god, you have so many saddles.
So ravagers drop saddles and you can fish saddles up. And you can find saddles in dungeons and all I do is explore and fight raids and do fishing. So I, I have like a barrel full of saddles and I don't know what to do with it.
Same with me with netherwort, I have a lot of it now, so.
Oh, I can always use another word. I think that's reached the end of what I wanted to bring up.
Does anybody have anything else they wanna chit chat about?
Oh, hi.
Worm?
Worm, hi.
Thank you for coming.
Been a while, how are you?
Ha, you.
What?
Hey, I, I'm good, yeah.
Cool, come have a seat.
Good to see you.
Are you sure you're ready for this one?
Yeah.
Does anybody have anything else they wanna chat about before we get to the uh, the nitty and gritty of it all, I guess?
I'm down for the nitty and gritty, if we gotta go there.
Yeah, sure.
Well, we do, we do, I appreciate.
I figured.
I know things got a little heated last time we spoke about stuff, I appreciate that we're, you know, coming at this from a bit of a diplomatic standpoint, you know, it might not say that way, but we can, we can try our best. I think maybe the best idea for me and for Sunny, probably for Worm as well, though I don't know how much Worm understands, but maybe if each side of the conflict could take some time just to explain what's happened from their standpoint, you know, no, like, nobody interrupting each other or anything like that, just so everybody can get like a clear picture uh, of what's been happening and why we're here.
Sure, would you like to go first?
To be honest, I really don't know what's going on, so I'm just here to observe.
People are angie and we're gonna get to the root of it.
Uh, would you guys like to go first?
Yeah, makes sense, it started with us, I suppose. Mary, do you wanna kick things off?
I'll, I'll start it off. I used to have three disks in my house above my bed and they were all lined up because Moon gave them to me and everything. And um, I then logged out, logged back in and my house was covered in cobblestone. And once I, you know, broke all the cobblestone and everything, my disks were no longer there, only one was there. And I know pranks have been going on, so I thought one of my disks was stolen. And so I went to Moon and I told Moon about the situation, but I was so angry that I decided that it was time to go in. Uh, not so greatly ask people, we were rude about it, we could have been nicer. And then once we got nowhere with that, I, I, my brain was foggy and so I thought it was the best idea to take the community bee, Bonbee and keep it for a bit, so that we would, um, so we could, you know, maybe have like a leverage over somebody as we were like talking to them to get the disks back. And then that wasn't good and I'm sorry, Rains, I realized that was a mistake. So then we decided to bring back Bonbee to avoid future conflicts and now Bonbee is missing again. That's the story, thank you so much, let me know if I missed anything.
Oony, how pretty was that?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's pretty much what happened. I mean, I'll definitely say my part, cause she kinda left out the fact that I was, you know, involved. Um, I am involved, I, I can own up to it. She contacted me about the disks, she was very upset about the disks. We did try to figure out an alternate solution or like I offered to get her new ones, she really wanted them and you know, when you see your friend upset. We all kinda ended up in this world, I came in alone, Mary came in alone, we've kinda become, you know, like family to each other. And she was upset, I didn't want her to be upset and so I did what needed to be done to make her not upset. Was it the best choice? Probably not. Was it rash? Sure, but I mean, I don't really wanna apologize for standing by my friend when she needed me, which I guess is probably one of the points of contention. But like she said, we did try to return the bee, we put the bee in Rains' house, because Rains is the one who seems to be most upset about the events that have transpired. The fact that the bee is missing at this point, I don't, we don't know what happened to it, we returned it and it's gone now. So, you know, I don't, I don't really know what to make of the situation and also Mary's disks are still missing.
Can I just point out that I haven't been here for any of this, so I have no part in whatever's gone wrong?
Oh yeah, no, we're not, we're not bringing you into this. This has absolutely nothing to do with you, we haven't even seen you.
That out there.
You're not guilty by association.
Do you guys wanna do your bit?
Sure.
Shay, since you were brought into this next.
When the disks went missing, I think I was the first person you guys talked to. You asked if I knew anything about it, if I'd seen them, if in the event that it was someone who had taken them instead of them just disappearing or getting misplaced, if I could think of anyone who would do that or any reason they would. I remember you guys saying that the reason you thought of was to maybe start a conflict and that by uh, taking something that was a gesture of friendship between the two of you, it was involving you both in a possible conflict. And I had mentioned that I couldn't think of a reason to do that and that I didn't know anything about it previously. When I met with Rains later that night, we talked about it and we also couldn't think of anyone who would take the disks. We both confirmed that it wasn't either of us. And then we found out that the bee had been taken, that Bonbee, a communal pet who cannot defend itself, had been taken as a form of blackmail, isn't quite the right word, but it, it felt like it was a, if we hold power over this thing that you care about, you'll have to return what has been taken. I can see that it was an emotional decision and I can see how that could be a conclusion that could be come to, but it's kind of scary to think that if it was just a mistake and if, if no one actually took the disks, when you took Bonbee, there was no indication of any plans to return the bee unless the disks, which might not have even been taken, got returned. So that was scary and we probably didn't react in the best way either. But coming from the backgrounds we do, we saw taking something that everyone cares about as a possible act of aggression. So we left a note, just trying to check in and say, hey, I think you went over the line, this isn't actually okay. We were trying to check in with, is this an act of war? Because if it's not an act of war, then we need to talk about this diplomatically and if it is, which it, it probably isn't, but coming from our like backgrounds, we wanted to check, I'm struggling to find words. If it is an act of war, war has to be declared and we were really hoping that it wasn't, but um, admittedly, we can be quite paranoid. I'm hoping not, that, that's one of the reasons I wanted to have a meeting in a neutral place and just talk it out, because everyone's pretty scared and.
Uh, I'll do. Well, I mean, maybe, maybe we offer a counterpoint to all this?
Maybe, once I'm done. Yeah, I, I really wanted to talk to you guys because I don't know what's going on in your minds. I can take educated guesses because of your actions and I can try and see you in the best light that I can imagine you, but I don't know what's going on with you. Pretty much all the communication has gone through Rains, so I really wanted to talk to you. I'm hoping that I'm not coming off as too aggressive or anything, I'm just trying to show our side of the story. We are very much of the belief that the bee shouldn't have been taken, there have to be consequences for taking it. And I feel like sort of there already have been consequences, but the bee still isn't back, which is not great. And I recognize that you tried to return it and so that's a little scary, cause now we don't know where it is or what's going on with it. Rains, do you think I'm missing anything?
I would like to point out that whatever consequences happen, you too, you blame me, you don't blame Shay. Shay was dragged into this because I lost my call, so if you're gonna be angry at anyone, you be angry at me.
To be fair, I did kind of involve myself when I acted as a diplomat and rephrased your words.
Yeah, but I was the one who wrote the letter and I addressed it from me, not from you.
Yeah, I, I know.
If you're gonna be mad, you be mad at me.
Easy peasy.
I remembered one other thing, the offer still stands. We would be willing to help you try and find or replace the items that disappeared. That offer still stands, I still offer to help recover what was lost. I think that's all? Oh, wait, um, I don't know if it's involved in this, but it feels like it might be related. In the Badlands, there was a trap set to explode and that is not sitting right with me.
Where was that?
And that's.
That was outside Sunny's farm.
Yeah, it was outside the potato farm.
Oh gorgeous, Sunny's farm.
So I, I feel like um, it's not an excuse, but if Rains and I have acted uh, perhaps more aggressive than we, we could have, it was partially due to paranoia of there being a trap set and with.
I'd just like to ask Shay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'd just like to ask, who said that? Worm wasn't here, Shay and I didn't do it, obviously Sunny wouldn't wanna do it, so.
I'm not smart enough for traps just yet.
I mean, I don't know, a big problem with a lot of this conflict that I'm not sure if all of you know, I was sleepwalking for most of it. And I know that sounds convenient, okay, I know, I know that sounds convenient, okay? But I'm completely genuine, I've been trying to write this since I woke up, because I had no idea what was going on. And let me be clear, when I first got here, I told you guys from the beginning that I sleepwalk and that when I am in that state, if you come across me, you should just steer clear, okay? I know it's a convenient excuse, believe me, I know how it sounds, but I'm not in control when that's happening. And normally, I'm not even coherent, but apparently that's changing, which is alarming more so for me than it is for you, trust me. I'm being told that I'm talking, I didn't have anyone to tell me what I do while I sleepwalk, like previously, so I, I, I just, I don't, I don't know. Did I set the trap? Maybe, but I have no way of knowing, so I'm not gonna deny if I did, cause, but I don't know, I don't know. I'm trying to be transparent here, but honestly, I'm feeling a bit backed into corners here, especially by some people, because, oh yeah, you laugh, you would laugh. Mister leaving signs outside my house.
Signs outside, why?
Signed outside my house, like some psychological warfare.
Why would I do that?
I don't know, because you've been pissed at me, you've been, you've literally been pissed at me this entire time.
I haven't even been here, Moon, I haven't been.
Guys.
Oh, so the, the letters where you've been like declaring war on me and shit like that, you have.
Okay, that was way too good, Moon.
Guys, this, yeah.
Guys.
Guys, guys, this is escalating into yelling and I'm sorry, I raised my voice then, but that's not what we wanna have here. Wanna have a calm discussion where we don't yell at each other.
First of all, I want to just pop some signs on the back, just taking note of everything. Because there's a lot of stuff that's happened that we don't know who's done it and stuff like that. And I think if we're going to tackle this and do the whole people need to uh face consequences of what they're doing, we need to keep track of what's happened and all the shit that's gone down. That's led to everything, like led to you guys feeling anxious and maybe being a bit more aggressive as a result. And the things that have happened to you guys in the farmers' faction that we also don't really have much of an answer to. So we've got the missing discs, correct? And we don't know who took those.
Yes.
No idea.
But it definitely wasn't me.
Definitely wasn't her.
Well, let's be clear, an investigation has not been launched into who has taken the discs.
We will, we will get to that soon enough.
Well, we should probably put down what discs it was that went missing.
True, Melo High and Stal.
I want to put it on the record that there are copies of those exact discs downstairs in the tavern. They've been there since the tavern was built.
Okay, so I've got missing discs, trap at Sunny's farm, signs outside Moon's house. I think that's it, isn't it? Those are the, those are the main events. What happened with the trap?
Shay and I were going on an adventure. We passed by that side of the border. We noticed there was a structure and there was a cake in the middle of four pressure plates. Shay said, don't do anything. I threw a torch on the pressure plate and it blew up.
Rains threw a torch to kill somebody?
No, we, it.
Yes, if they weren't armored, yeah, it would have killed him.
If they weren't armored and they didn't notice the hiss, it, I was concerned that perhaps when you stepped on the pressure plate, it would push up blocks around it to trap you inside with the explosives. That didn't happen and I'm glad that didn't happen. But yes, we we safely disarmed it from a distance, to be fair, by exploding it, but neither of us got hurt.
For the record, okay, Shay said not to do anything with it, just leave it. I didn't want to leave it lying around because I sort of wanted to see what would happen. I decided I would set it off, but safely. And no one else was around other than Shay or I.
Could have been like a prank?
Uh the rules.
Don't include killing people.
Yeah, the rules of.
Okay, but if it wasn't enough to kill people though, that's the thing.
Excuse, yeah, excuse me.
Armming, that's bodily harm.
The rules of, the rules of the prank war in that book state that no TNT is to be used.
I'll go check that, but I think I'm pretty sure Shay's right.
I think I remember seeing it, but I ignored it because I was like. Well, was it in the border?
No.
It was outside of the border. It was in the Badlands.
It was just outside, but like it was um literally right next to my potato farm like side of the border. So like further away from you guys, closer to mine.
I just wanted to say that the border that it was on is the borders and the ordente and neither Shay or I have any builds in that area. From my understanding, the only possible target for that trap would have been Sunny because Sunny clearly has a build there.
I I agree. That that seems pretty targeted.
I mean, I don't think I would have been particularly bothered. I mean, I would have been more annoyed about the fact it left a giant crater. I see it could potentially maybe have been a prank. It was pretty colorful.
If it was a prank, which which it could have been, it is in the rules if anybody wants to have a look at the book that says no griefing, including like TNT and stuff like that.
But isn't griefing like people's property if it was outside the borders and no one owns that?
Yes, explosions are reasonable in the Badlands, but it doesn't count as a prank if there wasn't any specific target and if TNT was involved, right?
If it was in the the Badlands, then.
It specifically says no griefing, no destroying blocks, no arsenal TNT in people's property or borders. So technically it wasn't.
Are we really gonna ignore the fact that hurting people is not a prank? Like seriously, is that what we're saying? That hurting people is funny?
I'm trying to see the best in whoever did it. I don't want to imagine that any of us would intentionally try to blow me up. I.
Okay, that's fair, but they were still gonna hurt you. Doesn't that make you at least a little bit angry that someone wanted to hurt you?
Not really. I mean, if someone wants to kill me, go ahead. Doesn't affect me too much other than levels. I would be mad if I was high levels, but otherwise like, it depends the intention of it. I don't know the intention of it, so I don't know how to deal about it.
We kind of at a point now where it's like, okay, it could have been prank on a technicality.
I find this difficult to handle, right? I admit that with everyone around this table, I'm not the most popular person here, okay? I didn't make a good first impression and I haven't done much in terms of making friends since then. Anything that I say is taken with a grain of salt because while Shay and I have been left in our factions, we've been doing our own thing, you guys have sort of been getting close. So regardless of what I say, I'm facing up your battle in a situation of he said, she said. At the end of the day, friendship, trusts and strangers aren't trusted. And to you guys, I'm mostly still a stranger. Having said that, I need you guys to consider things from my perspective. When does responsibility and accountability come into play? Because if Moon is saying she's not in control of her sleepwalking things, does that absolve Moon of everything that she's done while she's sleepwalking? Because I don't think it should.
I don't really know what's been happening. I don't want to jump in and try start things, but Moon said she had no idea what she was doing when she was asleep. I don't know. This is, I'm just recapping things. I'm not picking sides. I'm indifferent about all this. I'm not trying to get in the middle of anything, but I just want to point out she has no idea what she's doing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Yeah, you're you're not wrong. I don't have control and I don't know what I'm doing. And in my defense, I do try to right my wrongs. It is me to an extent. And I I am doing things and I'm hurting people, but you know, I can't stop it from happening. So all I can do is react. That's all I'm able to do. And like I I've, I tried to make it right.
I think everyone has got a point here. Well, first of all, what you said, Rains, about people knowing each other, what this is about is just, you know, bringing some sort of peace back to the server, resolving kind of all the issues that have been building up this whole time. It shouldn't be a popularity contest and I'm sure, I'm sure everybody here agrees. It shouldn't be about how many people are on one side and how many people on the other. That's, that's a war. I think we're trying to avoid that here.
Yeah, please, please no war. Please no war.
Yeah, if there was a war, I would try and shut it down immediately. And I think Eve would and Worm would as well. And I feel like the four of you guys wouldn't want war either, so I don't think we're going to end up in war.
What you're saying about consequences of actions and holding people accountable for stuff, I get it, I get it. What happened to Bonbee and, I mean, the other stuff like the discs, maybe a bit of a joke in bad taste with Sunny's farm. Can we solve this by coming up with some system to like hold people accountable?
Maybe we should, but it's a matter of fact of like what the heck would be the accountability? Because I don't want it to be anything too extreme because that sounds horrifying because we all do want to be friends. If we do have an accountability thing, what the heck would it be?
Personally, and I don't know if everyone would agree with me on this, but personally, I'm a big believer in the fact that consequences and accountability don't always need to come from a human. Like you forget to light up a cave, a skeleton comes and shoots you. Personally, I feel like a lot of the things that have happened, there sort of have been naturally arising consequences for. And I feel like for a lot of the small stuff, I don't know if we need rules for that. I I don't know. That's, that's just my opinion.
That's all well and good, but you guys stole a bee, a community pet. This can't just, I don't think that it should just.
I, well, you didn't exactly help the situation, did you?
Excuse me, when did you ask me?
What?
Sorry, sorry, hang on, sorry. I didn't, I don't want to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, yeah, we reacted. Sure. Again, no memories. Let's not ignore like the three threatening letters you sent me, like.
Okay, and I agree that I need to face consequences for those actions and I will. I will face consequences for the letters and I will accept any punishment or whatever you guys decide is appropriate. But I was above board the whole time. I didn't lie. I didn't steal. I wrote you letters. I didn't do.
How do we know you didn't steal though? Because we're here, no, we're, we're, we're getting away, like the root of the problem here.
Missing?
No, we're getting away from the root of the problem, which is that the discs were missing. If the discs turned on, then we can solve this quite easily.
Where is the justice in what has occurred?
I agree. Where is the justice for whoever stole Mary's discs?
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's a separate problem almost by itself. You guys decided that diplomacy wasn't an option by taking Bonbee.
On the note of threats, I read the letters that Rains sent. I vetted all the ones that I know about to make sure that they weren't too threatening because Rains was angry and scared. The gist of the letters that I read were, where is the bee? We need to sort this out. I'm seeing this, I being Rains, Rains is seeing this as a possible declaration of war and we want to confirm that that's not what's happening. We offer support as long as it doesn't. Here is a deadline for when this happens because when something's life is at stake, there needs to be a time that we know action has been taken. That was, that was the gist of that. And I'm not saying that we're all written perfectly. I'm not saying that you might not have felt threatened. And I know that you have no control over what Maiden does and no memory of it, but I need you to know and I need everyone else here to know that if we're talking about threatening, didn't Maiden threaten the inn in response to you asking if there was a war?
Yeah.
Maiden being the sleepwalking version of Moon. Sorry, we started calling Moon sleepwalking side Maiden so we can tell who we're talking about.
Great, it's got a nickname. Mary, this is, this is where you come in. I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
That happened.
If I'm going to face consequences for writing letters.
I never said that I wasn't going to face the consequences for this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just pointing out.
Can I just, can I just?
Yes, Worm.
Point out, I don't want to call Moon's sleepwalking side a different name. I think that is a bit, I think that's crossing a line. I'm not taking sides.
Maiden wants, Maiden wants to say that she's not in control of her sleepwalking, so doesn't that count as a separate person?
Moon, would you prefer, you know, you and your sleepwalking self to be referred to as the same person?
I don't know. I mean, I've never really thought about it.
Um I just don't want to say something that would potentially upset anyone.
It's fine. It's fine. It's not really upsetting.
This all feels kind of wrong. I don't know. I, I, I don't want to get in the middle of anything, but these last few weeks, months, however, I don't know how long I was gone for. I have been so out of control and everything that happened was so out of my control that I don't think it's fair for someone to get punished for things that have been out of their control. That's just where I stand. I'm not picking sides. I'm not taking anyone's.
I'll take the punishment if that's what it takes. Throw me in a pit for a week or something and be done with it.
The point of me bringing up that Maiden or sleepwalking Moon or whatever we want to call that entity, point of me bringing up that threats were made from both sides or both sides felt threatened was that I want us to make sure that if Rains was going to be punished for leaving threatening messages, that we understood there were threats issued on both sides and it's not fair to villainize one side. Everyone out here was at fault. Things could have been handled better from all sides and we're trying to work that out now, right? Trying to work it out.
While we're talking about that, I'd just like to point out that there was a sign on the notice board recently.
Oh, yeah, that.
Um they called me a liar and evil.
Yeah, it said Rains is evil. It's not.
It's not. Shay got rid of it.
Yeah, I got rid of it because Rains was going there about twice every day, just staring at it and brooding. And it was really clearly affecting his mental health, so I took it down. Yeah.
Wait, what did it say?
It said Rains is a liar. He is evil. Don't trust him. That might be slight paraphrasing, but those were the main words written with normal capital letters at the start of a sentence and full stop. So I don't know if that matters.
Definitely gives a tone impression, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just say, I don't feel safe here anymore.
I don't think I do either.
I get that, especially when you're coming back to this and it's like, all this shit's going on.
I feel like everyone here is so divided. I'm not against the factions. I think they work fine, but I feel like there has to be a better way to handle this.
Yeah.
I don't know what that could be, but I feel like something clearly isn't working if this is where we've ended up.
Yeah, but I'm glad we're talking about this now instead of just letting feelings sort of fester on both sides without understanding. I'm I'm glad that we found a time where we could all come together and talk, even the people who aren't involved, so they can help mediate. I'm hoping we can make everything feel safe again.
Wasn't everybody or nearly everybody happy with the system we currently have? You know, we've got the factions, we've got the borders, we've got the streaming passes. I don't think Worm was here when we spoke about it, but Worm's obviously feeling unsafe and maybe, maybe doubting the system slightly. But like the only other person I can think of that wasn't happy with it was Rains. And before we start circling back and talking about the same things over and over again, Rains, what would you think is the best option then if what we have currently isn't it?
I don't know, honestly. I just want there to be consequences. I get that maybe I crossed the line, but if I cross the line, then other people have too.
I'm very on both sides on this conflict because I hate the idea that that Bonbee was used. I'm sure you guys gave Bonbee back. I don't know what happened after that. When Worm, Shay and I first started this world, we didn't have any system in place. We were able to work it out because there was just three of us. So we didn't have a system in place that would give negative consequences if someone did something bad. If we do want justice, I think what we should do is put a system in place that we all agree on. I don't know what consequence there should be because I can't think of any. Death, that's not a thing. Putting someone in a prison, you just put someone in a prison for a while. Like, I don't know. I think we should decide what consequences there should be and like for what. You two should face the consequences for Bonbee and maybe Rains took it a bit too far as well and you both just took it too far either side.
I think I'm going to head out now because I haven't slept in months.
Yeah, you should go get some sleep.
But you guys are not sleeping for months at a time. You guys can't sleep. I know I sleep too much.
Yeah. Give me the sleep.